Councilman Stagliano?
Here.
Ilmenin?
President.
Smith?
Here.
Carkey? Malone? Howard?
Here.
Mayor Kenyon?
Here.
Okay, number four, approval of agenda. We get a motion to approve agenda, please.
I will make the motion to approve the agenda.
A second. Ilmenin? So you think so? Tony? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against?
Me.
You don't need to, but you can. You can always. Well, just for record, I guess. It'd be easier for me. Okay, sure. Uh, can we have a roll call on, uh, the approval of the agenda? Councilman Stagliano?
Yes.
Uh, Ilmenin?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Carkey, absent. Malone, absent. Uh, Councilman Howard?
Y'all know it was me.
Is that a yes or no?
That's a, that's a no.
Uh, Mayor Kenyon?
Yes.
Alright, motion carried. Okay, number five, public comment. Three minutes each. Public comment? Feel free? Neil? Post on the comment?
Number, number six, city manager agreement renewal. I made a little bit of help on this, Jeremy.
See that?
The procedural lines, so, I mean, we do that. Might need to throw me a ball or something.
Mayor, in front of you, you have a, uh, proposed city manager agreement renewal. I believe this was provided to the city council, uh, in advance of today's meeting. I assume everybody's had a chance to review. But what, uh, I think makes some sense is, uh, entertain a motion, uh, on the contract itself. Uh, if there's a, uh, a motion and a second, then open it up for, uh, discussion with recog- recognition of each individual, so you don't have, uh, individuals talking, uh, across. There's a lot of information in there, so it makes some sense to recognize the, um, council member who wants to speak, uh, discuss, uh, the provisions as you being fit. Maybe even go through one at a time, or you can take them all at the same, whatever makes some sense to you. And then, um, once discussion has been had, either call for a vote or, um, uh, an amendment to the original. Okay, so, uh, that's what we'll do. Kind of start, I guess, from the top. I guess it'll work your way down. And we get to each part, uh, and open it up for comment, for amendment to council. And remember, when you're speaking, uh, you're speaking to the chair, which is me. So unfortunately, you gotta look at me. But, uh, it's just kind of the way the meetings run, so. So I guess, with that being said, uh, term of contract, January fifteenth, twenty twenty-four? Before you go further, I guess, I'd recommend, uh...
I'll put a motion on the floor.
Okay.
Uh, we have a contract request in front of us. I'd like to put a motion on the floor to approve this contract request with two changes. Beginning salary to go to one oh five instead of one oh eight. And define, on page two, the defined benefit plan. Rather than a defined benefit plan, it would be a defined contribution plan, uh, with a ten percent city match.
Just for my, uh, notes, uh, Councilman Smith, the first amendment was one oh...
Salary of one oh five in twenty twenty-four with three percent matters thereafter.
Now, Mayor, you'd be looking for a second to that, uh, motion, those amendments. Do we get a second?
A second.
Okay, now, we can, we got that now, on the table now, so let's kind of, uh, open up the discussion.
I'll, uh, I'll start, I guess, uh, if you don't mind. So the, the city mayor and myself have had a couple different conversations with the city manager. Obviously, two, the, the one big open item was the, uh, add to the retirement plan. After our last discussions, it was determined that rather than a defined benefit plan, we'd go to a defined contribution plan. We didn't really settle on a percentage, I just kind of threw one out there for discussion purposes. And, uh, and I'll put it out there that based on what we've, what I've made the motion on here, um, I did do a comparison between the city of, what this contract would provide and what the, uh, mayor, sorry, the city manager for City Vishvaming, uh, currently receives. And this would put them on equal playing fields, per se. We know that when we hired Mr. Heffron back in two thousand, how long ago?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. You know, that, that was my, one of my last acts on council previously, was to bring Mr. Heffron in. We knew at the time that we were bringing him in at a, at a discount. And I think over the past six years, uh, he's proven himself to be a, uh, a, a very proficient manager for the city of Nagani. And I'd like to see his employment continue and to see his, uh, efforts be recognized.
Just keep going, you have something else, we get some talkers.
My turn, yeah, uh, Mr. Mayor, I, uh, I fully support this new contract. I believe that, uh, the, uh, the term of the extension is appropriate for what we need. Mr. Heffron, I believe, in my opinion, is the best thing to happen in Nagani since I ignore. And I think that what we ought to do is, uh, make sure that we, uh, let him continue his process that he started. This is, he, he's inherited a town that was in despair, and this isn't a switch that you just throw overnight. I, I believe in, uh, Mr. Heffron, and I believe that he is, uh, worthy of us to trust him for an extension of this long to, uh, fully develop what his, um, vision is here for our city.
Okay, uh, Mr. Ilmenin?
Um, I, I concur. I, I have nothing further to add to that.
Councilman Howard?
Well, I think this has been one major ankle grab of myself. You know, I looked through this and I'm like, are you kidding me? The crap he's already getting. And then, we sat right here and voted not to give the chief of police insurance for his dependents. But he's, he's the chief of police, he's taking bullets if he has to for the city. He carries a gun and wears a vest, not a fake cape and a goddamn, some silly crown or something the manager made up with paper mache in his office, on time we're paying him for already. And how much did he want to give the city workers? Six percent, remember? Six percent. What's six percent at eighty-five thousand? It's a hell of a lot less than a hundred and five thousand. And why would we pay for, for his dependents but not the chief of police's dependents? That don't seem right to me. Is he like the city's bastard child or something? Really? You want to give the manager a raise like this? But you don't, did you actually read his pilot grant? Did you actually take the time to actually read it? Look through it and, and understand what the hell it says?
Remember, you're speaking to me, Mr. Howard, I'm sorry.
What's that?
Remember, you're speaking to chair, remember?
Well, I, I don't want to just tear you down and hate, that's what I'm trying to play.
It's, it's alright, man.
You know, I mean, really? I, 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 I can see already how this is gonna go, and I think it's sick. I think you people should really take a look. There's complaints. We had a meeting, Mr. Renforce was here. And at the end of that meeting, after Mr. Renforce pretty much proved that his water line was broke, the manager knew it, it was broke by the contractor, and then Nate said, "No, we don't have nothing to do with that", and handed us all out that paper. They said, "Oh, well, the city's not liable, the contractor is", and all that other bullshit. But then he sat here and said, "Oh, any damages downtown, the city's gonna cover them." Well, I know somebody supposedly was in a hospital last night because it, because the sidewalk or the street or something down there isn't safe to walk on or drive on, or what the hell ever they were doing, riding their bike or whatever. And I looked through this and I'm like, you get to his list of accomplishments and his dreams and whatever, and I'm like, he makes it sound like, you should, you should wear a friggin' cape, Nate. You should wear a cape, man. You're like the friggin' superhero. You did this all by yourself? All of this shit you did by yourself? You're taking credit for stuff, I mean, really? Like... It's just amazing to me. And your homeowner's been complaints. Your homeowner had. If you don't want to look into them, I guess that's up to you. But I was voted in by the citizens, and if they call me, I'm gonna talk to them about whatever the topic is. That's, that's how, why I'm here. I, I want people's taxes to go down. You know, at the last meeting, it was mentioned, Jackson Grove was sold for twenty-five hundred dollars a lot.
Remember, we're speaking about the agenda here tonight, okay?
Well, I'm, we're speaking about employing the city manager for extended periods of time.
Agenda that we agreed on, okay?
I did not agree on it, Dave.
It was voted on board one, it passed, we're speaking on the agenda.
This whole agenda is about keeping Mr. Heffron on, giving him a huge raise with extra benefits. So I think all this other stuff is pertinent to the situation. Now, I don't know why, but I haven't had the great experiences with Mr. Heffron that you have, I guess.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Howard. Uh, I guess the, just kind of wrote a few things down here. First thing, firstly, I think Mr. Heffron has done a great job here in Nagani. When I first moved here in two thousand and six, and this is no disrespect to anyone, uh, Nagani wasn't in very good shape. It was what it was. And people may have lived here their whole lives, may disagree with me, but I'm sorry, I have eyes. I saw what I saw. He came here, and two thousand and eighteen, he's made a bunch of, uh, improvements to the city. Drafted, yes, he has not done it on his own. He has done it with working with city employees, with city department heads, uh, different boards and commissions, and city council. Everyone working together is helping the city move forward. It's not just one person. And I kind of jotted down the city manager. What's the description? Description of the city manager is a supervised administrative affairs of the city. That's point six, point four in the city charter. "The charter preserves the public peace and health and safety of persons and property and shall enforce the ordinance of the city, this charter, and the laws of the state." Mr. Heffron has done that. Maybe not to some people's liking. Yeah, and believe it or not, he's stepped on my toe a few times or two. But still, he has worked for the benefit of the whole of the city. And I think that's pretty, uh, to me, that's pretty clear. So, I guess it's, that's my take on it, and I think retaining Mr. Heffron would be a, be a very good thing for this council to do. So, I guess, no...
Mr. Mayor, could I be recognized?
Yes, please.
Alright, thank you, um, so thank you for the friendly amendments, uh, Councilmember Smith. Just to kind of move things on, uh, through this contract, because it sounds like through the consensus of what I'm hearing, uh, that's what this council would like to do. So, to settle the matter on the wage, I will accept that in the contract. One thing I will note too, and thank you for your comments, Mr. Mayor and other folks on this council. As I know, you all have received these community accomplishments. They are not accomplishments of myself. And I've never portrayed myself to be the one who has gotten something done. We have a team here. It's council, it's boards, it's the people in Nagani, it's my crew, my staff. They have all done a remarkable job in the things that we have completed within this community in less than six years. It's, uh, we're the envy of many communities in UP and of many communities downstate. Colleagues that I meet and work with on a regular basis, uh, you can just see that in their faces, on their, in their eyes, and in their comments to us. We would not be able to get these things done if it wasn't for all of us working together towards a goal of bettering this community. Of course, uh, I'm not perfect, um, I do make mistakes, and if I do make a mistake, I will own up to it. And other folks may not agree with that, but that's the right to agree, uh, excuse me, to, um, have that opinion of the matter. As for the, uh, other option that you changed, uh, Councilmember Smith, uh, the defined contribution, I will accept the change from going to a defined benefit to a defined contribution. However, we'll have to have a little room on this ten percent part, so that just kind of puts us in the playing field where we're at now, um, with all the other, uh, actions here. For your pleasure, I have provided this for you, kind of explain what that is. I'm not expecting you to read through the whole thing. More or less, it's just a program that'll be set up through MERS as a defined contribution plan, where the city only pays once, unlike our MERS plans currently that we have, which are defined benefits, most of them. Where the city pays a variable, uh, cost to that upfront and throughout the term of some day's retirement. This would be like giving me twenty dollars. I invest the twenty dollars, and then the city's portion is done. The liability is severed, and there is no liability with this retirement plan. Also, I want to make note that this thing, I've provided you two of different organizations that I am belonging to as part of the city of Nagani. If you know, there are several areas where I've served as officers on some of those as well. Does it kind of let you know what stretch we have and what reach we have as a community, um, throughout the region and in Marquette County? I'm not sure, um, one comment I did hear about something about healthcare plans. Uh, there's, there's nothing in this request asking for any additional healthcare benefits. Um, there are already healthcare benefits that are already provided in the original contract that I've had for four, or excuse me, six years now. It's the same benefits all the other employees get, including the chief of police. The only benefit the chief of police does not get would be his wife covered under the term of retirement healthcare benefits, because that no longer is an option we have or provide to our employees through contracts that we've already passed. So that's that, I'm not exactly sure where that comment came from, but I just wanted to clear that up if, if that was easy enough. One thing I, I guess, the one, the one spot I'd like to talk on, Mr. Mayor, is removal of the advance. The advance was taking and giving me, uh, part of my salary, which was five thousand dollars upfront, uh, to pay my student loans off earlier. I'd like to have that removed from my contract. It wasn't giving me additional five thousand dollars, it was just providing an advance. And in that same contract, uh, the four-year contract where that was, uh, developed, had I been fired or left the city at five thousand dollars, we'd be prorated to a certain degree, I would have to pay back money had I not stayed employed for the whole timeframe of at least the first couple paychecks, so. So, if there is no objection to the legal advance, I'd say we'd agree to those terms. I guess we first have like to talk about, if you're okay, Mr. Mayor, about the review periods. We have, uh, three on here. Two every, or excuse me, one every two years. The first one commencing in twenty twenty-six, which would be a three hundred and sixty-five review, they call it. Um, we did one of those one time, involved, uh, council members, some former council members, colleagues that I work with, employees, it can involve, I think, up to twenty-five people. I'm not exactly sure on those numbers, but it gives a real review overall of a bunch of different metrics. And it's usually pretty good for, you know, five years. They recommend you do one of those every so often, so. Uh, the other two reviews would be, um, twenty twenty-eight and twenty thirty. Of course, you'd have to change the date of May to, um, try to review, but only to January. We could do a review, uh, prior to that, or we could just do two reviews, it's up to you. I just kind of wanted to see where you guys wanted to go with this. But the second review at least would be a mutually agreed upon review, questions and who was involved with that. Um, we could do that in-house, it costs cheap, that'd be a cheaper way of doing that. We could hire a third-party person to come in and do it. However we want to do it, but that'd be something we just mutually agree upon later when that timeframe comes up.
Would, would we be able to just push those all up here? Twenty-five, seven, and nine?
You could do that if you want.
I'm just thinking, if we did that in May of, uh, twenty twenty-nine, that kind of lends itself to a future contract negotiation if we were to get that far.
I would be agreeable to that. So, sometimes you have May, maybe? I mean...
May is still, still sufficient in my opinion.
That's sufficient, yeah. I mean, I'd be agreeable with that. I mean, now I want to, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to defer to the city attorney. Upon hearing consensus, should Mr. Smith make a, uh, friendly amendment? Or should we wait for all the friendly amendments?
If I could, let's get through them, and then I'll get one amendment at the end.
I do that, that's most sensible. Okay. Uh, fringe benefits, I'm requesting, uh, thirty-five days of vacation, right now I'm at twenty-three. Um, so again, this would be, if this was to be a six-year contract, um, you know, that would give me, uh, twelve more days. One of the criticisms on my most recent evaluations was I wasn't taking enough time off, apparently. And I will mention also, all three of those evaluations in six years that I've been here have been stellar. Uh, all of you that have been here know that, um, so I had high scores. It's up to you, um, I, I'm willing to budge on this a bit, if, if that is your pleasure, but that's what I have the request though. So if there aren't any changes, or if there are... And then, the severance pay, uh, and this is very standard in the business, equals six months of the annual salary, uh, regardless of what time of the year I would be terminated, if I were terminated. So let's say, for example, I was terminated in December tenth of this year, or whatever, I would receive fifty percent or sixty, to give you six months worth of my salary, which would be of a hundred and five. Then, on the next page, um, the vehicle allowance obviously is below what the city manager Vishvaming's making. I'm still good with this five hundred. It is also below what the city manager of Marquette is making, uh, and other communities as well, uh, around the area as well. But I'm, I'm agreeable to those terms. So the only two items we have left, from my perspective, is the retirement percentage and the term of the contract. So originally, in the document you received, I believe you all received this, maybe you haven't received this, another situation. You have a copy right here. Now, this is the original plan that you don't want to go with. That's because we'll, we'll put the city in more debt, I'm not willing to go that route. But basically, for a principle of how much this would come up to, the two-point-five percent multiplier is what all the other, um, MERS folks have currently. That would be a contribution of about at least sixteen percent of my salary, um, based on this information here. And I guess, I'll, I'll start it off. I'm, I'm willing, uh, my ask or request would be fifteen percent total, which is five percent less than the city manager of Vishvaming. And also, I'll note that city manager Marquette receives not only a MERS plan, but also has a contribution there as well for four fifty-seven. No, the, this contribution, I'd say it's, uh, closer to sixteen. And I'm willing to go to fifteen for my request. And then, lastly, uh, term of the contract, six years, so, um, that's all I have, unless there's any specific questions, uh, Mr. Mayor.
I guess, method, uh, one item, I guess that's open then, would be the defined contribution percentage. Uh, for the information you provided, the Vishvaming is at twenty percent, which you're already receiving a seven percent matching to four fifty-seven, so I, I would be willing to bump that up to thirteen to be equal to what the city Vishvaming is receiving.
Clarification on your remarks, I mean, the seven I get now would only be moved to fifteen. I wouldn't receive the seven plus another fifteen. You're, that's not what you're saying, right?
No, that was my intent, was the, you keep your seven percent match to, to the four fifty-seven. And then you would open the DC as a ten percent.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, see, I misunderstood what you were...
I, I apologize, I, I don't think I communicated that properly, the only...
I, and then, uh, Mr. Mayor, I withdraw my, your fifteen percent, because I misunderstood what Mr. Smith was saying.
Yeah, no, my, my, my intent with the defined contribution was to put that at a level where you could potentially use that as a bar for future employees.
So if I'm hearing Mr. Smith correctly, for the record, keeping the current seven percent...
To, to your four fifty-seven?
To whatever it's going for now.
And then opening the defined contribution plan?
For a ten percent.
With a ten percent match, correct?
I'm agreeable to those terms. So with that, Mr. Mayor, if I'm not mistaken, we would have to have a friendly amendment for the retirement portion. And, let me grab my notes here.
Um, the, the only, the only change I'm seeing is the years in which the reviews would take place.
Yes, you're right, I'm sorry.
The, the seven percent was already there, and I changed the DB to a DC in the initial...
So just the review period.
Well, and then, and then the salary as well, right?
The salary's already been in the motion.
That was in my... Okay, that's in the motion. I see what you're saying, sorry.
So, uh, uh, Mr. Mayor, as far as I'm concerned, I agree to those terms, if the council agrees to those terms. If you want, we can restate those terms, Mr. Mayor, it's up to you, however you want to do it, so.
I think they've been... Sorry, I have a question of, uh, our attorney. So, the motion on the floor was to accept the con, the terms set forth in the contract request. Do we also need to add, um, to allow the city mayor authority to finalize this agreement? The, the final agreement in which, uh, our mayor and our manager would sign?
I think that makes some sense.
Okay. Because we're, uh, we're not coming back to the table with this agreement for, I mean, this is what we're approving within, and that will get essentially inputted into this agreement in which the city mayor would finalize.
If, if you vote, I'm, I'm asking.
Okay. Thank you.
See, so, so it was right now we can, which, you know, Councilman Smith, uh, very well, uh, explained, uh, the changes for which, uh, we're looking at as contracts. So, then we would, then vote on the, uh, uh, changes for which we're...
We vote on the contract as, as articulated and as suggested for amendments. If that passes, then we will, uh, modify this to reflect those amendments to the current version. Uh, and Nate's already indicated his, um... Uh, and Nate's already indicated his, um, affirmation to the terms, we would execute the agreement then.
Okay, so, uh, your call for a vote for.
I, I think you want to clean up the friendly amendments.
If I could make an amendment to the original motion to, uh, motion to approve the contract request that was presented, uh, which included the change of salary to one oh five, a change in the years of review to two thousand twenty-five, twenty-seven, and twenty-nine, and the removal of a defined benefit plan and the addition of a defined contribution plan at a ten percent city match. And also add, um, authorization for the city mayor to finalize a formal agreement to these terms with the manager.
So, we have, so we have a motion on the floor.
Support.
Any more comments, sir?
Totally nothing. I stated my case in the beginning, I'm still in support.
Same. Ask for any, and ask for any other comments. And ask for any other comments.
Yeah, this one, yeah. Counselman O'Nan, sir. Counselman Howard?
I think it's ridiculous, I, I think it's ridiculous that we're even considering this. Why are we talking about what happens in Ishboming or Marquette, other than to say that might be a nice place for you to apply to? You came here, you know, our budget was low, and you should just live with that, that's part of Nagani. We don't want a bunch of city folks coming here. We want it to be quiet. We like it that way. They can bring their money, but really.
Thank you, Mister Howard. Uh, myself, uh, I don't have any comment other than I support, uh, uh, Councilman Smith's amendment to this contract, so, you can take a vote on that.
Can I have a point of clarification, Mister Mayor, I got, Mister Mayor, a point of clarification. With Mister Smith versus, these numbers would not be accurate or reflected, so we just.
Correct, the, the starting base of one oh five with three percent, yes. With the three percent adders for your, correct?
Just a clarification.
Okay. Okay, so, I was in favor of.
I'd make it a roll call vote, just for my, for my purposes.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote.
Alright, um, Councilman Stagliano?
Yes.
Councilman Ellman?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Karki is absent, Councilman Malone, Councilwoman Malone is absent, Councilwoman Howard?
Nay.
Uh, Mayor Pentes?
Yes.
Alright, motion carries for him.
Okay, so we're, so whatever I know is.
So, what I will do is I will, uh, wrap up this, um, contractual term and present it to you. Take a look at it, make sure it reflects all the changes that we made, uh, and then you and Nate can settle it out.
Okay, yeah. Okay, I guess, moving on. Uh, I guess, uh, council comment, so, a public comment. Public comment, anyone for public? Okay, there's a public comment? Council comment, uh, I'm gonna start it tonight, I wouldn't have to be radical. Like I said earlier, uh, when, uh, I was on the search committee in finding, uh, city manager to replace the previous one we had. Now, for about a year or so, we had temporary, you know, city managers who did a yeoman's job. You know, just kind of keeping the wheels on the city, I give them all the credit in the world. But I was also on the search committee to find new city manager. And, well, it's, it's not an easy thing to do, it's, and I'm not disrespecting anyone who interviewed here, but they didn't, they didn't, they didn't seem a fit. It, they, one of them was from way up in Alaska, he's, he just wasn't, just wasn't a good fit, and there's a few others who came from big cities, so. I said that, big city mentalities and such, it's, they would have had that. Uh, Mister Heffron here at the last minute interviewed, and he came in at a price for which, to his credit, uh, he wanted to get back to Michigan from Nebraska, really mad, so. When we came up the first contract, yeah, we, we kind of lowballed him. But Mister Heffron wanted to get back, so he accepted the offer, overcame the Nagani, and through the years that he's been here, I said already before, he is, he's proved his worth. He has definitely made improvements to the city and, I know some people may disagree, I understand that. We're all adults, we do have that, we do have that right to disagree with one another. But, I look at it as, uh, what's in the best interest of the city? And is the city making improvement? And I think it's pretty clear that, yes, the city has been making improvements for the past six years, so. I just want to say, I just want to thank Mister Heffron for all of his efforts, I want to thank all the city staff for all their efforts, I'm not leaving you out either. And the efforts of different boards and commissions and also the various members who served on city council over the years. We're all working together to make this a better place to live and it's beginning to be pretty clear. We had an audit last week and the auditor said, we're sitting, we're steadily making headway. So, it's pretty hard to argue with, uh, numbers, you know, myself not being a numbers guy, but when I hear from professionals, it's pretty hard to argue against that. So, I guess for, I guess for the most part, uh, that's my comment for the night and I just want to, thank you people for attending and I'll hand it over to, uh, Mister Smith.
Um, I don't know if I got much more to add to that, but I, I guess I will, I will stipulate, back, back to your point on the search committee. Prior to, to Nate being hired on, our city charter was restrictive. Um, stipulated that you, that there was a requirement of so many years of, as a city manager, experience-wise. You know, obviously Nate, Nate's title in his previous position was not city manager, but through our attorney, he concluded and, and gave us approval to move forward, that his, his, his core job duties were that of a city manager. Um, so again, to, to the discount, I, I say discount generously, that, that we got, uh, Mister Heffron at in the beginning, I think had we brought in a seasoned city manager, we would have been nowhere near that. Um, I think you, you've gained a lot of experience over the years, um, and, and really have, kind of developed your own, your own style, your own mentality as a city manager, and it's been working well for you in my, my opinion, so. Again, I'm, I'm in support of what we've done here tonight and I look forward to the future.
Counselman Howard?
I, I think it's foolishness, I, I think it's all foolishness. You're voting to raise taxes, you're owing down taxes, you're voting to raise them. Utilities, you're voting to raise them. That's what's gonna happen, that's what happens. You go tell your neighbors and your families and everybody else, you came here and you voted to raise everybody's taxes and your utility bills and all that other crap, so you can get extra m- money to Heffron here. His, 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 his review was not stellar, it was not a stellar review, anybody that says it was stellar knows that's bullshit. We all sat here and listened, I was part of the pub, county, the city, just a citizen at that time, but we all sat here and listened to it, and it was not a stellar review. And to say it was, that's just sad, that's sad. Anybody that says it was stellar is sad, I mean, really.
Thank you. Y'all know better, Mister O'Nan?
Uh, nothing further to add, thank you.
Uh, Mister Stagliano?
Yeah, I just, um, I just want to say, you know, I've been around, this in my career in different ways, um, through different avenues, and I've seen and worked with a lot of communities, a lot of city managers. A good one is very, very hard to find, especially for a small town in the U P that was in desperate need of some TLC. Um, we found the right guy, who had a forward-thinking mind, who was able to go and find the grant money, was able to, um, construct the plan, get people on board, convene people together. And, uh, then we're talking about citizens, we're talking about boards, we're talking about state entities paying attention to Nagani, um, giving us money. You know, um, I think, I think there are some things that, you know, anybody, uh, everybody's gonna have some, uh, some complaints about the, the, the city manager, okay? But I think a lot of times, um, those things are, uh, not directed towards the right place. Um, I think, uh, Mister Heffron has done a, a top-notch job for what a city manager is supposed to do. And that's, uh, community and economic development, public safety. And, um, I think we're going down the right road, I get talked to all the time from people outside of this community about how good we're doing and the things that we're doing. There's a time to save money, there's a time to spend money. And right now, we have to do something to rebuild this town, to bring it back to the glory that it was once. And, uh, we finally got a city manager who's forward-thinking and, uh, innovative, and we've had a council that has let him do his job. And I for one am happy that Mister Heffron is willing to stay, because that's rare to him. That's all I got.
Thank you. City Manager?
Mister Mayor and Council, I really don't have too many comments, just thank you for the, uh, um, kind words. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to serve this community longer. Uh, we have a lot of work to do still, uh, I look forward to working with you and the community to move our community forward in the direction it needs to go. Uh, that includes, uh, repairing our infrastructure, bringing more businesses to our community and growing our housing stock so we have more residents living in our community. There's a lot that we can do, a lot that we should do, and, uh, I think we're moving in the right direction. Uh, I hope to have your continued support, obviously tonight I do, and I look forward to, uh, forging ahead with Nagani.
Mr. Germer?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So, just on that, uh, I think, uh, I can motion for a German. Make motion for a German? Stagliano, that's my, uh, Councilman Smith, all his papers, say aye.
Aye.